Evening. It is 6:32 on October 23rd, 2017, and we will call the school committee meeting to order. First, we have our minutes from October 2nd. Did everybody get a chance to review the minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
I can make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any changes, updates, comments, questions? No? Okay, here are none. All in favor to approve the minutes from October 2nd, please say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any visitors? Hello? Did you, do you have any comments? No? Just visiting?
Just visiting.
Visiting visitors. That's good. Well, good to see you. Thank you for coming. Then we're gonna move on to new business. Approval of private schools for 2017-18. Will you do the introductions?
I will. From McDuffie. We have... I'm drawing a blank! I'm so sorry. Steve Griffin!
Hi, Steve.
Oh my gosh, I was not prepared. I apologize.
If I knew that, I would've gone straight.
I know, right, right into the questions. I apologize. Mr. Griffin's presented to us the application for McDuffie for approval, which is a yearly process that we go to, go through for our private schools that reside within the boundaries of Granby. In addition, November 6th, we will have children first be presenting because they are now a kindergarten servicing private school within our boundaries. So, Mr. Griffin has the hot seat first, and then Donna Danette will be here on November 6th.
And that's the main reason why I asked for an introduction. It's not that Steve hasn't been here before. It's just that I thought there were more than...
Yes.
There was more than one.
Yep.
Okay. So, we'll come back to Granby Public Schools. I know that we're gonna have questions on this side, but did you have anything to share with us?
And why don't you come up just so we can catch your voice on the mic?
Where would you like me?
Anywhere you want.
We will grab you a chair.
An actual hot seat?
An actual... What color would you... I think orange might be...
It should be red, though.
As we get into the fall season, hot seats are not as available. They're kinda chilly.
So, happy to be here. This is now our seventh year operating in Granby. And so, I come in petition for the seventh time. First few times I came here, I was asked the same question. So, finally, I've come prepared to tell you that we have this year 45 students from Granby at the McDuffie School, from 33 different families. And by my account, at least three of those families had moved to Granby in order to send their children to McDuffie. That's down from 51 students from last year.
Did they move from far away or nearby?
From local towns, but further away, so that the commute would be more reasonable to...
Commute reasonable, okay. Also, I think we know that that number was much higher.
It peaked at 51 last year. And I think I had said there was a bit of a demographic... Let's call it the rat and the snake that would work its way through and that we would stabilize probably a little more closely at where we are now.
Yeah. There was, there was another question that we... I think we asked every year that we had this conversation. Opportunities for collaboration, cooperation for different activities. Any, anything to share on that front?
I have had one parent of a Granby student ask me about swim team and collaborative opportunities for extracurriculars that don't exist for students here in Granby. And I've asked my athletic director to check with the New England Association of Schools and Colleges about our ability to do that. I know we've had that conversation in the past about your sports teams that aren't offered at our school. And it's always the case that we would have to make sure if it's a team that makes cuts that no Granby student would be cut for a McDuffie student to have a place. And the same thing would happen in the other direction, obviously. So, we're doing a little bit of research on that.
So, it's good that there is that type of interaction. Sports are always good and easy to go into, I guess, so it's good. But I think in our previous conversations, we also had other types of cooperation. Since these are educational institutions, anything related to education. It's interesting that... Hi. It seems like there was never an interaction between the administrators. Is that fair to say?
It's fair to say. It's fair to say that there was a yearly, a yearly question. I don't wanna disparage anybody from the past. I've reached out in the past, but I can't say that I have in the past, in the past year to explore any... We have been approached, we were approached yearly about sharing some professional development opportunities. And I believe the last time we were asked for that, it was just the timing that didn't work about a possible share. But that's always on the table.
So, currently, we don't have anything...
Nothing that works.
For academic or athletic purposes, for that matter, right?
We're doing a little bit of research on the athletic side, so there's an open-ended question there.
I will not dominate the conversation, so I'll have some other questions later on. Did anybody else, anybody else else have any questions? I think you had one.
Well, I was just looking at the documentation I was hearing. It said there was 51. So, is this, is this last year's?
That's last year.
What's that, 41 now?
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Done? Okay, so I'll continue.
I do have one. Are there still financial incentives offered to Granby residents for McDuffie?
We have a general, generous financial assistance package for all students. People ask about the Granby discount, as it's known, which is sort of an automatic half-off discount. We ask that all families disclose their financial circumstances, and then we go through a financial assistance package. So, the Granby discount can be applied. It's not necessarily an automatic discount.
I thought there was some discussion in previous... I don't know if it was last year or the year before that that wasn't going to be such a generous discount at some point for Granby's students because obviously, it was impacting the public schools.
So, we've said, I mean, we wanna be good neighbors for Granby families, but we've said that it's not an automatic discount.
I don't wanna be too presumptuous and ask what that means 'cause at least all of the examples that I'm aware of, they did take advantage of some discount at McDuffie. Which, at the end of the day, I wanna qualify it this way. You're a private institution. You're a private school, and you're working that way. When we first had this conversation six, seven years ago, it was a much smaller school. And, you know, some of the incentives, potentially from a private institution's perspective, were designed to attract more students so you could get to a number that could make your institution sustainable. But the other side, I think we mentioned this a few times, and I'm not saying this in a way to sound disparaging, as you said, but the other side of the story was that because there is no way we can control or influence the incentives, and in some cases, my understanding is it may be even more than they have. It may be related to their financial situations. The, the number of students that went to a private institution or overall private institutions became a huge issue for us. So, when we first brought this up and thought we could potentially have a conversation, we thought that there was really going to be some conversation, some adjustment. It wasn't going to be, you know, still a huge incentive for Granby residents to go there. Obviously, you know, to play that game, you offer it, somebody takes it. But in the process, when we were trying to make the case for our schools and when the, what we call the vicious cycle started, the numbers that were already at McDuffie created its own attraction. So, people started just thinking that, you know, the grasp was a lot greener on your side. Which on some things, you know, they do the benefits. They do, they see the advantages, they see the benefits. I can appreciate that. But it became quite difficult for our public schools to really control some of the message that was out there. Part of it we called misperceptions. Part of it we called misunderstanding. So, that's why we just really, in a very frank way, brought that up the last couple of years, hoping that, at least my hope was that by now, there would have been some conversation at the administration level to find some ways to leverage that neighborly collaboration that you're talking about, which unfortunately, we haven't seen yet. I don't know if it's gonna happen. I'm not gonna hold my breath anymore for, for that type of collaboration. But what I'm trying to understand is this. Are we really part of the overall Granby educational system? McDuffie and Granby Public Schools? Are there really some opportunities for collaboration? Any answer goes, by the way. I mean, there is at this point no, no restriction to any sentiment. Or should we just assume that, you know what? We're basically here for our annual approval, and then we will do whatever we need to do for our institution. And therefore, maybe expectation of any deeper collaboration, of which none exists, but even if there is any, may be too much of an expectation? Is that fair to say?
Well, I, I think there are a number of issues or areas that I wanna address from the question. I guess it's, it started through just talking about incentives and working to where you are. And I think there are a number of different issues at play. I wanna reiterate, I can give you an example. I can't really speak about individual parents and their circumstances, but I can give you an example of a parent this past year who said, "I know how things work. I wanna give you X to send my child to your school." And we basically said to that family, "That is not how it works. You don't just get to come in and tell us how much you pay to come to McDuffie. No, there isn't an automatic discount. And no, you don't get to dictate your terms." This is all going to be based on the kind of demand that a private school can achieve, right? The more demand, the less reliance there is on the sort of deal-making that a parent would think is out there. But to kind of close that off, to talk about financials... Yes, financial assistance could be more than half if a student is a strong student and the family has that need. But that's not just for Granby. That's, that's for any one of our students who's applying as a day student. So, the idea of the Granby discount was to say it's kind of half guaranteed, and the rest of it would be based on your, your financial situation. So, what we've done is kind of backed away from that and suggested that the financial assistance is, is important. And if you have the ability to pay more, you should pay more. So, from that, it moved into, and I get how they're connected, the vicious cycle, which is to say, you know, you had some students who could rightfully be attending Granby. We don't know if they would or not if they're not attending McDuffie, but I'm sure some of them would if McDuffie wasn't, wasn't up here. And then you moved into the question around useful collaboration. And I will reiterate that, you know, I think the collaboration around professional development's an important one for us to...
My excuse.
For us to explore. I don't want to tell the Granby school folks how to do their job, but if it's that important to you, make it a mandate for your superintendent because that'll come from, from your side, right? There's been no mandate from the Granby side to make something happen. And I've certainly reached out in the past to talk about making something happen. We've not followed through with anything significant. But that doesn't mean, so I'm being open and frank, that it can't happen in the future. I see the professional development thing is, is a big one. And from our standpoint, you know, since we're here and we're in the room, we're doing 13 hours this year on English language learning in the classroom, right? I don't know if that meshes with Granby schools or not, but we can certainly supply the timing and the dates of what we have organized. And the question would be, again, teacher professional development is... It's a good place to start. So, we're open to having that conversation.
What are some of the, some other examples of collaboration between a private school and a public school? Because I'm sure, you know, McDuffie is, they have other schools, right? Nationally. This is not the only location, am I correct?
It is the only location nationally.
Oh, it is? Okay. So, in your experience in the private school sector, what would be examples of...
Examples that I've seen that have worked are partnering for community service. I have seen examples of students in private schools partnering with literacy programs, so reading buddies and that sort of thing, to come and, come and assist in ways in the schools in this direction. I worked for 15 years in, in boys' education. And so, before I came here, a lot of my experience was trying to create co-ed opportunities. And so, that created sort of thinking of different ways to have boys and girls working side by side. So, club life was, was the way that we did that. I don't think in this case, given sort of the temperature and the environment, that, you know, that friendly rivalries would be a good idea at this point. I think it would probably be better to, to stay on the collaborative side. But frankly, some of that low-hanging fruit, that easy thing like serving, serving together at the same time would be a good one. We host a charity run, and it'll be the seventh annual in the spring. Something as simple as inviting track athletes or cross-country athletes to come and participate that, at that, at a reduced rate or something like that in order to get them to, to work together. So, these are all good ideas. It's the... But I, I think your point is valid, that given little to no mandate, right? A yearly question of, "Has it happened yet?" Or I don't think that there's... I don't think it comes forward on the priority list. From our standpoint, I think, you know, I have challenged some of my folks on the service side to get out there and see if there are schools locally that would appreciate something like that, like a reading buddy program or something if it, if it didn't already exist in schools. So, we're happy to explore that.
Are these similar to those ideas that you said you approached our schools with? So, that's, that's good to, good to know. But, and by the way, you know, you saying that we can have a mandate and we can do stuff. We, I don't think anybody on this committee takes any of, any type... That type of feedback ever personally. That's fair. We can do the same thing on this side. But all that said, since we've been having this conversation for the last so many years, every year when we ask the same question, this is my personal input to this dialogue then, that I would have expected you to let us know as the school committee in this town that you have been trying to approach. So that it would have given us some opportunity to explore a little more. Obviously, you don't have, you're not bound by a school committee, but, you know, we try not to go too deep into administrative things. It's not our purview. We just, we stay away. We have a superintendent. But it always helps us to know what is working, what is not working. And that it helps us to, to really create some of those mandates that you talked about. So, without that knowledge, it's, you know, it's, it makes it more difficult. But it's, it's, yours is obviously helping as your, your feedback, and it's, it's, the point is well taken. So, we're gonna continue to try to find some opportunities. Again, at this point, I'm not gonna hold my breath because I was really thinking that something was really in the making.
Right.
And I thought this several years ago. And every year, you know, the same conversation went nowhere. Is there anything else that you wanted to share with us? Since one purpose of this conversation is to better understand the curricular strengths of your, of your school. You gave us appendices. Is there anything that you wanted to share with us as part of this approval process?
Well, I would just say, just broadly to highlight the changes from last year in the report is just that we've added a few high-end courses to our... A few high-end courses to our, our course catalog. So, we're offering the next level of Mandarin, hoping to add AP next year. We've added Advanced Placement Biology to our course calendar this year, and Advanced Placement Computer Science as well.
How many AP classes do you have?
I think that's gonna be 15 in total.
Classes or separate, separate courses?
Yeah. And so, again, when we transitioned, we, we had... We didn't really have a lot of AP courses when I arrived. We had our own advanced level courses. Because we've become a much more international school over the years, AP is sort of an international shorthand for quality. And so, the marketing for a marketing purpose, it's attaching that designation to something where, you know, I'm sure our teachers probably would've liked to have a little more autonomy at the highest of, of high levels, but that was an important piece for us.
And you selected over IB?
Yeah, and I was at an IB school for 14 years up in, in Canada and really liked the program. It's an integrated program. It's not for everybody. And if you're gonna do it sort of à la carte, picking and choosing, that's kind of the AP specialty. So, in that sense, we tried to fill in some of the elements of the, of the IB ourselves. And our focus this, this past year has been on, on leadership elements at our school. So, creating new course requirements for students in leadership, whether it's public speaking or it's, or acting as a sort of communications portion of leadership. And then our senior kids are doing a, a leadership practicum. So, they're all choosing, choosing to lead and reflecting on it and then presenting on it as well. And so, I know from the, from the IB standpoint, the sort of culminating project, whether it's the extended essay, sort of a deeper senior project kind of thing, this is sort of a parallel, but not as a deeper academic experience, a deeper experience in leadership.
Anybody?
I just find this whole process to be strange. You know, we're sitting here and having this discussion. And, you know, I'm looking at the numbers here. And, you know, you have 6% of our student population. And, you know, the next closest has less than half of our students going to McDuffie. And I very much appreciate having choices, you know, private school choice. And I just have such mixed feelings about the whole thing.
About this process?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, there's not much we can do about this process.
I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, you know, I have some questions about enrollment and recruitment in particular. You know, we see a change in Granby from 2011, where there was one student, then eight students, then 17 students, then 35 students, then 43 students, then 45. You talk a little bit about, you know, kind of tapering off, and that's about what you're thinking would be, you know, what you'd see from Granby. But my questions really are about Belcher Town in South Hadley. You're recruiting four in 2011, 10, 10, 6, 9, 12. They're a much larger student population. You're taking a much lower percent of students out of Belcher Town. And then two in South Hadley, and I can't really find it in 2011, 12, but seven, 14 up to 18 now for this year. So, can you talk a little bit about how you recruit students? Because it just seems that Granby is disproportionately represented. And I don't really... From a public school administrator point of view, I don't see that as being a good neighbor per se, but maybe I'm just misunderstanding it.
Frankly, despite, you know, having a commercial at the halftime of the Patriots game last, last week, we're, we're pretty much aware that about 90% of our recruitment is done by word of mouth, by families that have had a good experience at McDuffie and tell others. So, it's a good point about South Hadley. It's been more difficult to catch on in, in some of the towns that, that surround this one. We've had a lot of good, positive word of mouth from Granby. In terms of our marketing, so you know, we purchase mailing lists of families of certain means within a certain distance of the school. And we try to target them in sort of a, a general way. You know as well as I do, receiving a postcard about an upcoming open house is not as strong as, as receiving a message from somebody who says that McDuffie's been a positive experience. And so, we're not particularly targeting Granby parents any differently than we're targeting any other families.
And so, a clarifying question would be, is the same fee structure applied to now Belcher Town and South Hadley? Anybody who applies is getting the same fee structure proposal made to them, whether they're a resident of Granby or South Hadley? And has that always been the case, or that has not always been the case?
That's not always been the case. About three years ago, we discontinued the automatic 50%. Not to say that it's not, you know, judging ability to pay and working with families about the affordability of McDuffie. But it has not been a specific policy.
Does, a side question. Your question reminded me this. Is McDuffie part of a broader series of schools? Not other the same name? Because the first, first time we approved, and I wasn't even on this school district then, on the school committee then, there was conversation about some other schools in New England. Did that change? Is it a different structure now? Is it just McDuffie all by itself, or...?
Well, there is a McDuffie campus in New England, and there is one school operating as McDuffie, Beijing, in China. And that opened this September. We are working overseas, and I've been doing sort of international business development on behalf of McDuffie for almost the entire time that I've been there. Continue to explore opportunities in New England, but there are no other sites.
Must've changed then, because there was definitely another school that was part of that same, same structure when they came here. It was part of their presentation.
Was that before me?
Vermont? It was before you.
Okay. So, it might've been at the time, and I guess when they were looking at getting Granby Preparatory Academy approved to operate, there may have been a broader vision. But as far as I am aware, the people who came, one of them... So, Wayne Brewer is the fellow's name. And his son was on the board of directors at Lee Academy in Maine. And so, there was certainly a... And so there was certainly a, a working relationship there, but no fiduciary relationship, management relationship in, in any way. And I agree with your observation that it's, it's odd to be approving a school and seeing, you know, students that you'd like to have at, at Granby, but, you know, from my understanding of the approval process, it's, it's reading closely the, the documents that's applied and, and approving that we are able to run a private school, and I know it, it doesn't feel in the interests of the school.
Not the public school.
The public school itself, yeah.
Getting back to Cheryl's point, if the incentives are, have been more equalized than the last few years, and we're still seeing a disproportionately higher number from Granby, do you have any theories as to why that is?
Yes, yes, it's, it's word of mouth.
But there's word of mouth in South Hadley, there's word of mouth in Belcher Town, and Chickapi, and...
Right, so you'll see that it, it has started to catch on in South Hadley, which is a positive thing. And, and so I hope that as that grows, that you'll see that it's proportionally then less reliant on Granby families in terms of our, our demographic mix.
Because that, that's kind of my hunch, is that McDuffie did rely on Granby students when they were building the, the base of the school. And, you know, unfortunately, it came at our expense. And, you know, now we're trying to dig out from under that, because six percent of our student population, that's a pretty high number in, in a district the size of ours.
I'm not aware if it's high relatively with other, sort of, as they call them, town and gown relationships with other private schools that exist in the hearts of cities, but I know that this is, this is a small town to have a, a private school attached to, a small district to have it attached.
Well, and just to put it in numbers, if you're taking, you know, forty-five students, and, you know, our chapter seventy is reliant upon enrollment, that's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's just ballpark that the school district does not have now, because students are not attending Granby public schools. And not that people, you know, don't make a choice, but I just wonder about the disproportionate percentage of students from Granby. So we, we obviously have had many conversations about that and the perception, but I think we need to be very clear that we offer an outstanding program here in Granby, and that we are competitive.
Do, do we know, like, I'm looking at the mix, and I don't know if it's last year's numbers or this year's?
Those are last year's, yeah.
But do we know how many of, of Granby students are in each of these, these grades approximately in proportion to, like, like last year's number, eight in grade six? How many of those, like, all the way through? Because I, I'm just kind of curious if, if a lot of these to the previous, you know, automatic, you know, fifty percent are in the higher grades, or if they continue to be a, a serious percentage of each of the grades.
Well, I think we can take Stephen at his word, that, you know, the idea is that forty-five is an average number that would sustain McDuffie.
Is there, is there a specific point during the kid's education that makes it more logical for them to move to McDuffie or any other school? So do, in other words, because, you know, you're right, the numbers are early on, is it the sixth grade, or if you don't make it, then probably seven is not the best time, but maybe eight, nine? Is that how it works?
I think there are logical entry points. I mean, drawing my own experience as a parent, right? So you would, you would think it would be middle school, and then it would be high school, and then probably the question of whether the last two years of high school, whether you're going to make a change or not.
Yeah.
Which suggests six and nine and eleven.
Right.
We don't get a lot of day seats in eleven.
It's got over the spikes over there, too.
Our, our biggest entry points are six and nine, but obviously, it, it depends on the transition in the school district. You have one after six, so then that suggests that there would be another little, sort of smaller influx between six and seven. So this past year, for instance, we had, I believe it was nine students in sixth grade, or eight, eight students in sixth grade, and now that class is fifteen or sixteen with three international students. I can't say where the other four day kids came from, if they all came from, whether any of them came from Granby, but that's where there's, there's always a little bit of an influx in seven as well.
So if there are no more questions, let me wrap up with this. I, I, first of all, thank you for coming. I know you had to come, but, you know, thank you for, thank you for coming.
I'm sure this isn't easy for you.
Exactly, to, to a conversation like this. I, I don't know that we ever had the complete illusion that, you know, that, one way or another, your institution would say, you know what, people, don't come over here, because we had a good conversation with the Granby public schools. What I seemingly, naively expected was that, since we use the word neighborly a lot during every conversation that we had, there would have been some opportunity to share things. And it's kind of puzzles me that there are really, seemingly, nothing that we can share with our, our collective wealth, whatever that may be, whether it's athletics, or academic, or social, or cultural, whatever it is, right? Just we don't get to share those. So having said that, we will make sure that we reach out to you to see if there are any opportunities, and we can probably promise you that we're going to have a similar conversation next year to find out, but if there is a way in the, in this framework for you to really help us better understand what it is, how do these dynamics work the next time you stop by, that would be appreciated. Because obviously, you know, we, we can't have, have a commercial in the middle of a football game, we can't underwrite the National Public Radio, we can't, you know, send cards to everybody's home to invite them even to our open house. But we take pride in what we offer here, but we also take pride in what we can offer almost everyone else. And the reason why I'm saying it's puzzling to me is that we know that there are a lot of great public schools around us, and we always found some way to collaborate with them. So that's why I'm really curious how we were not able to find those opportunities. Hopefully, we do in the coming years, coming year and years, but we'll leave it at that. So is there a motion to approve, right? Cheryl, is, is, is there anything else that you, okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Gran, uh, McDuffie Schools for the school year two thousand seventeen, eighteen. Thank you. Is there a second?
Awesome.
Okay. Any other discussions?
What happens if we voted no? I mean, is this, this is just cursory anyway, isn't it?
Yes.
Well, you can't really, unless there's, you know, the building is falling down, or the curriculum doesn't meet the frameworks, or, you know, so, you know, McDuffie does a wonderful job with their students, their curriculum, with their program. There's no doubt that it is a well-organized, well-delivered instructional program. It is different than the public school. They do not service, you know, special education students, or not required to, so there's some differences there, but what they do meets the standards of educating a student in Massachusetts, and well done.
Yeah. But, you know, to add to, the funny thing, we do approve, and in a way, it becomes a formality, but it's a formality that requires our time, just like probably all of us did. We went through your documents to better understand whether or not everything was there. I checked the, the appendices, I, you know, I did not actually get a chance to check whether or not that one appendix that I said was not there is now there?
Uh, no, I think I mentioned it to Steve today.
There are a couple of appendices mentioned. One of them is saying that we should go back and look at what was submitted last year, and there's another one that I looked for and I couldn't find here. So it's not the curriculum, so it's not really the most important part, and what you're saying as far as the building inspection is that it is about to happen for the, for this year, or you're expecting the results of it?
We certainly know that Granby's had its issues with having building inspectors be available, so I saw one in the building the other day.
Okay.
I think it was his first trip out, so I'm assuming that those documents are in the works. So it's typically been that you would get the previous years, one with assurance that the next one is on the way, just based on the timing.
And just so you know, I visit the school, I get the tour of the school, I see classrooms, I watch instruction, so it, while it feels really formal here, there is a lot of work that happens behind the scenes in terms of, you know, making sure that what is in the curriculum is actually being taught, you know, that, you know, that students are participating in the extracurriculars, and, and that it meets the criteria of, of a quality public ed, or quality education in the state of Massachusetts. So, and we do the same for our other private school partner, which is Children's First, so going there, visiting, and having to wash my pants afterwards, because the kids are that tall and bump against you with their sticky fingers, but, so it, there is effort and time that's put into it, although it feels sometimes like it's just a check on the box, and I appreciate certainly McDuffie's effort at being welcoming there.
So that's good information to publicly state.
Yep.
You know, that, I don't think most people know that.
Right, right.
Cool. All right, so all in favor to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks again, Steve.
Thanks very much.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so moving on to old business, we have nothing else in new business, correct?
Correct.
I mean, I don't see anything, but just wanted to make sure. Old business, did you care to change the order, or do you want to start with the strategic plan and tell everyone what we've done so far last week?
Uh, that's fine, we can do strategic plan first.
Sure.
Uh, we had a wonderful strategic plan task force meeting. We worked on reviewing the strategic plan to date, which will expire in two thousand eighteen in June, and so we looked at each of the goals, each of the objectives, and we documented in small groups that we've accomplished in the plan, which we've talked about as a school committee before, but this was the task force's, task forces, may the force be with them. It was their opportunity to go back and take some pride in what they had said was going to happen, and then see what actually had happened. And then there were two other questions we had, one which was, are there anything, are there any things in the strategic plan that are going to just need more time? And so we have a whole bunch of ideas around that. And then there's a third piece, which is, are there any items in the current strategic plan that really don't make sense anymore, and really need to just be revisited in total? And so do they belong? Do they fit? Do they not fit here, maybe somewhere else? So it was a really healthy conversation, and I want to thank the task force. There are community members, school department, personnel, administration, teachers, and there's also town department and community members, so it's really a wonderful group of people. We did ask the question at the end, which is, what does a Granby graduate look like? And that stimulated a bunch of conversation, and so our next meeting, we will take all of those ideas and make sure that that matches with our mission and vision, and if there's anything missing from that list of what really we believe a Granby graduate possesses when they graduate from us, and just make sure that it's woven into our mission and vision, and then we will start writing the next strategic plan, also with input from the superintendent entry plan. So the next meeting is next Wednesday, and it'll be here, and anticipate maybe one or two more meetings after that to finalize the, the next strategic plan. So it's exciting work, it's very time-consuming, and it's, I hope people are finding it exciting and energizing as I am, because it really starts to shape the direction of the school district, so. You were there.
I was there, but, you know, you covered everything. It's, it's always great to be part of that, but when you think about it, in light of the conversation that we had, we had representation from our families, staff, teachers, administration, town committees, as you said. So we get to shape the future of our home school. It's not like, you know, going somewhere else where you say, you know, it's, I'm just going to look at the menu, and I like something, and I'm going to, you get to cook here, and you get to really add Granby's flavor to what we, we want to have in our education. So the more we can have that type of interaction, and one thing that, that is absolutely true, and that's, this came up several times, and we have to work on that, and it's something that this committee talked about over and over. If word of mouth is helping someone other than us, it also, we also have to look in the mirror and say, you know, what else do we need to do to make sure that the word of mouth also includes Granby public schools? And the nice thing about, which I love about our committee, is that we acknowledge that we have other things to do. Our challenges are a little different in conveying that message, but if nothing else, those meetings, as Cheryl said, are energizing in that you see the excitement of the participants, and how they enjoy being part of this district, how they really would like to do whatever they can to make sure that what we call that Granby graduate is the best student that you can find anywhere. So it was like, you know, to be continued thing at a very exciting point of that meeting, just Granby graduates, so we'll see what comes out of that, and we'll keep everyone posted. Budget two thousand seventeen.
Yes, well.
Pretty sicko.
Well, we kind of covered that last time, but at this point, we're, we're winding up in terms of working on the end of the year report, which is due to the state at the end of this month, which is a little less than a week and a half.
So what happened in September?
What happened in September?
I thought we were just, September, we had a deadline to finalize the books with the town. Are we all good on that?
We are good with that, yes. We, we finalized the books with the town. We had a balance in the local budget left of thirty-three, thirty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. I said eleven cents, Chris said nine cents, two cents off.
All right, that's good.
And so from that...
Somebody's two cents.
Somebody has their two cents in there somewhere. So we had to do a reclass to food service for the food service deficit, plus covering the inventory change, so that was thirteen thousand, three sixty-four, fifty-three per Tom Scanlon, the auditor. That left us a remaining balance in local of twenty-one thousand, five dollars and fifty-eight cents, and we reclassed local funds, or will, Chris has on his side, we'll be reclassing local funds on our side, taking, taking the funds that we charged the school choice and charging local budget, so we'll have that much more money in school choice going into FY eighteen.
Can you repeat that inventory part?
That's what I was afraid of. Because this, I know this is going to wind up being another meeting, and I'm going to have to get stuff from Tom. So he calculated, in his lengthy calculation, it, for whatever reason, doesn't agree with what, with what we received from Chartwell's. He came up with a deficit of four thousand, twenty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents, but then you also have to cover the inventory, because it gets reclassed as an asset, not an expense, which causes a cash shortfall that has to be covered so that, so that when you look at it on a cash basis, the food service revolving account isn't in deficit. So this is a transaction that will happen every year. It'll, money will go out and in. So that was nine thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and sixty-six cents, so that's how we got to the thirteen, three sixty-four, fifty-three.
Deficit.
Deficit, yeah.
So here, here's, here are the two problems that I have.
Here we go.
Um, one is the fact that a third party had to find four thousand dollars more that we could not see, and whether it's Chartwell's or whoever it is, but, you know, in my mind, ideally, there should be never, there should be nothing else to discover other than what we discussed, because we're having this conversation, what, every other month? We ask them to bring their sheets, and just will look at it, you know, promise this is what it is as of this date and all that, and then end of year comes around, and turns out, a third party person goes through the things, and then we have four thousand dollars extra that we had to account for. So that's a question for Chartwell's, I guess, that we have to ask? Is that, is that what it is?
Well, it's probably more a question to the auditor, because, I mean, Chartwell's does their P and L, and then, then Tom Scanlon does his reconciliation of, of food service between last year and this year, inventory changes, things that Chartwell's doesn't really do.
But, but that, that doesn't make any sense to me either, that the auditor would dictate how people should be running their books. It's either this or not. It's either correct or wrong, right? or wrong, right? Whether it's Chartwells or us, either we're doing everything correctly or we're making some mistakes in there.
Well, Chartwells-
Because the auditor's job is to find the errors, right? That's why they are the auditors. So, but they can't just make up rules that are not applicable to the way we keep our books. I mean, that's not the way it works.
Well, Chartwells, Chartwells classes that inventory as an expense, because it was purchased. So you bought goods, it's an expense. But what DESI requires at the end of the year is you can't have that as an expense, because you didn't spend it, it's sitting as inventory. So then that has to be, has to be credited out and then debited as an asset. So it makes a change in the books from the way Chartwells would look at it as an expense, to what DESI requires, that you now have to call what was an inventory that was an expense, an asset, because you can't have an expense that isn't spent.
So they define it, they define it different, differently. DESI defines it one way, Chartwells defines it another way.
And Tom is obviously seeing it a different way, too. I'm not, and, and what I'm saying that, it's not because, you know, I'm, I'm an accountant and I can tell you. What really is puzzling to me is that, obviously, you guys are following an accountant, accounting process, Chartwells does as well. So Tom apparently has a third process that we're not following, and I'm wondering why. You know, just, we should all be on the same page as we're closing the books. The other side is related to that beginning and ending of inventory. Let's say we just all agree that, yes, if you have the inventory, you have to account for that. But part of that inventory, I'm assuming, is now available for this year, right? Did we take that beginning balance and put it on the other side of the ledger, or?
Right, that's what has to happen, is every year-
Did we do that? So did, we're only looking at the difference between the beginning balance and the ending balance in the inventory? Is that how it works?
That's the way Tom explains it, yes. So that what's supposed to happen is at the end-
That actually, that I like.
Yeah, because then what happens at the end of the year is that, that was now an asset, got spent. So then it has to be taken out, and has to be credited as an asset and debited as an expense.
That makes sense. That makes sense. Yep. Okay, good.
But now there, we're, we're clear on the Chartwells, right? There is no deficit, we're at zero.
Lunch balance.
Right, right. We are at zero. Sent the information to Chris, I said, do you agree? He said, that's what I posted. So-
Okay.
So we should be at zero for food service in FY18. Starting with, starting with no deficit.
FY17 or 18?
Well, beginning FY18.
FY18, yes. Okay, let's start it with zero. Awesome. Alright, sorry, that's, that's the exciting food conversation.
Just can't have a meeting without one. So FY18, in your packet, I put an output for the local budget. As of now, of the total appropriation of eight point five million, we have a million sixty-three expended, which is twelve point four percent of the budget. And one of the things I want to draw your attention to, I mean, there's nothing, if you look at this, everything's over budget, because what we don't have in here is an actual budget line. And the reason why that is, is because we obviously start this budget process back in December, January. We go through several iterations, and then we get to a point where it's voted back in April. But a lot of changes have, happened through the summer. So the other document that you have in your folder, other than just operations, is a comparison of the budget, the way it looked back when the budget was voted, and the way it looks now. And I think that's probably the important document to walk through. So if you look at that document, which is titled FY18 budget as of 10/23, you've got the first column, which was the original budget at the last iteration we had when it was voted. And then, as of 10/23, what changes have we had? And most of the changes have been changes in hirings, so that you'll see a lot of swings in the payroll area. In maintenance, there's some changes, but there's no net difference in changes. John wanted to have a specific line for vehicle repairs. And then we also needed to pull out some money to pay for custodian subs, because we're down a custodian from last year, and we also have had custodian out, so we need to have some money for subs. So he basically kind of reorganized his budget and pulled some money out of his other accounts. And then with, and so basically what we have in the column that says changed from original, it's what are the, what are the changes that occurred between when the budget, budget was first finalized back in April, and the way it looks today. And the total difference in that, if you, if you look at the last page, is one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and forty-eight cents. There's, there's not a lot of magic to that number. What the actual, if you look at the bottom of that page also, the total difference in the budget was one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety cents. We know that our three warrant articles that we need to fund the items that were not part of the budget, and that were additional unanticipated expenses, which when we had our meeting with the tribe board, and the finance committee and the town manager, you know, the, when the budget was passed and the override didn't pass, you know, the, the explanation was that if you have unanticipated expenses, then put them forth to the town. We've had three, which we've asked the town for, and they totaled one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and forty-eight cents. If you look at the bottom of that chart, I, I listed them down there on the left-hand side. There's a second grade teacher, there's an out-of-district placement for a student that we thought was going to stay in a program here, but couldn't. And then there was a vocational tuition and transportation that the district's responsible for. So-
And where are we in that regard with those, with those requests to the FinCon?
So I've been in conversation with Mr. Martin, and he is requesting that we ask for a definitive response from finance committee regarding those requests. But it's believed that they would not be, finance committee would not be taking those up. And so that we need to get that final answer from the finance committee.
I'm confused. What do you mean by they won't be taking that up?
They would not be funding those requests through the process of budget transfer.
You mean, you mean the precise process that they instructed us to use during that meeting?
Well, apparently, now what we're hearing is that that process had fine prince to it.
Yes.
Or, you know, as usual, something lost in the translation or communication, that there was, there was an upper-
I haven't written down-
I understand that.
Verbatim.
Yeah, better than that, I think it's on YouTube.
Yes.
I could go on YouTube right now and pull those-
So those, that's exactly what we heard. But now what we're hearing is that there is a, a pretty small cap to each amount that you can ask, like eight thousand dollars or something.
Eight to twelve.
Eight to twelve thousand dollars.
Not according to what they said, the reserve funds, there was a hundred and thirty thousand cap-
But now there are different things added to it.
For unplanned, unbudgeted, and there was a separate, a separate capital plans funds.
Yep. And on top of that, the total amount here is in excess of the amount that they would consider, even though these are multiple items. So it kind of is in conflict with, with what they were saying, that if those were small numbers, they would take up to whatever the cap is, then we would discuss the remainder, I guess. In this case, I don't know why we did not do that. But the biggest problem becomes the ceiling for that, for that amount that can be requested per item, is now really limiting this conversation.
Was that the explanation? That, that's my understanding. And so again, I think it's important that we get that answer directly-
Yeah.
-from finance committee or the select board. Just as a point of clarification, those requests were made in three separate requests. So each got its own documentation, each, it's, you know, each had its own budget transfer form filled out. So, so in other words-
So what happened, did they say no? When they say no?
Well, then, we have to go, we have, I mean, we have, these are, these are our requirements. When I say our, when the students go somewhere, we have to, right, it's a state, state law.
Right.
So we, so we have to go to the special town meeting to have this same conversation.
Wait, 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 we, we need to back up. I don't think it's that simple, I don't think it's that black and white. If, if there is a process by which the district can get some reserve funds, why is it that we just, oh, well, they, they said no, so now we have to go to the town?
So we're not, we didn't say that.
If there is reserve funds-
We didn't say that. We just said that we have to go back, because we don't want to be unfair to this whole conversation either, because we did not get a formal response from them. You're making a great point. So instead of jumping to conclusions and talking about special town meeting, this was really the eventual possibility. What we will do, we will ask for a formal response, so we can better understand what the requirements are, what, you know, what is really causing this potential rejection, and then we can go from there.
Is there, this is where I'm getting a little confused. We made a formal request, so why would we not get a formal response in the first place? This is what I'm confused about.
And not only that, but I think if they have specific rules, can't we get a copy of what those rules are, so that we have them and know them and understand them for next time, right?
Isn't those rules be right on the town website?
All, all good questions, so we're going to be asking all those questions, and we'll, we'll have that-
The form itself should be available to us. I, I, I'm just beside myself.
I think I'll be going back and watching that YouTube video and reminding myself of the very nice conversation we had, where we were told we could do this exact thing and that-
Simple, simple!
The only reason we had been turned down before was because of a different person in a different seat, so.
Well, because we didn't ask.
And we didn't ask.
And we didn't ask. And, and again, I'm, I just to point out some of the absurdity here, that we made a very formal written request-
Yes, we did.
-in very separate appropriations for each individual item. And I'm dumbfounded why we did not get a formal denial when it was sent in writing.
In August.
And it came through these other channels. It's just, it's dumbfounding to me.
So we sent in the, I just want to be clear, we sent the request in as we were-
Written request.
-instructed to do.
Written request.
And then the response was that we had to resubmit the request to the finance? No, no. The requests were properly shepherded to finance committee.
Okay.
I had made some inquiries about where they were in the process. And then Chris sent me an email saying that he had followed up verbally, just to find out where they were in the queue. And he received information that the finance committee would not be considering them for approval, and that Chris recommended that we move forward and ask for a formal, a formal response from finance, either directly through finance or working with select board.
I'm sorry, but does anybody else find this absurd?
Absolutely.
Just to clarify-
The finance committee chair-
But just to clarify the absurdity-
Why did the finance committee chair just write back with the rules?
Well-
And the result. And the result, and his reasoning. I mean, that's how that goes.
But the, but the, the other piece of the absurdity is when we were sitting there, that was the statement, when you have these unintended or, or unexpected situations, we can get the money through special appropriations from the finance committee, and nobody mentioned caps or stipulations that came along with it, which probably should have been mentioned.
No, they didn't, they didn't mention a hundred and thirty thousand cap.
Overall, yeah.
Overall cap. But there were two different funds. There's a reserve funds, and there's a capital plan fund.
Yes.
And so the other piece of this was, through writing these formal requests, you were instructed to submit them to the town administrator, Chris Martin. And then he forwards them to the finance committee.
And I will say, you know, never having done them before, Chris and I had some conversations about how to fill them out, and what, what they were looking for. So we, we worked together to do that. And then, like I said, we, you know, at the school department, tried to follow up a few times, and, and then finally Chris reached out as well. And that's when I was given notification that-
And the notification was a verbal notification?
It was in an email.
It was in an email from the town administrator?
Yes.
Who had a verbal discussion, or was given written?
I believe, I don't know. I, I couldn't answer that.
So the, the, we had, we had a conversation, and I just, I was trying to put two and two together. But the one thing that I don't want to do, I don't want to speculate only to find out that certain things were misunderstood. So I just, you know, I, I would like to wait until we have that formal communication. But that said, just to remind ourselves what we heard, and this is not, this is not just this time, this wasn't the first time, that reserves are for unexpected events, unexpected, uh-
Unplanned.
Unplanned expenditures.
Unbudgeted.
Right? And therefore, we should, you know, we should, we should try not to use those for other purposes, but if, if they happen, we should go to the finance committee. That's what we all heard. The, the other part of it is that, in our, in our presentation to the town, part of the funds were requested, which we did not get, which was part of the override question. We made it very clear that every year, there are special education expenses that we cannot anticipate. And if that happens, we're going to have to go back to the town meeting and spend some money to convene it, and then ask for that amount. That it makes sense to keep some on the side, and if, and if we don't use it, then we don't use it. We just, you know, we give it back. But we're basically, this budget, probably one of the tightest budgets that we had, in that there's really nothing on the side to spare, everything was without reserves. So some, some, some elements of our conversations don't add up, and that's where I get confused. Otherwise, if there are rules, if there are requirements, if there are reasons for it, I'm, I'm all for it, let's understand, so we can, we can operate within those. But when the, when the rules and expectations and numbers keep on changing, it's very difficult really to, to respond to those, let alone make the arguments that we're trying to make, based on the experiences that we had in this, in this district. And every other school district is having similar experiences, too. With respect to special education, with respect to health insurance, with respect to, you know, their circuit breakers, with respect to other stuff. So, you know, but we're going to find out. Let's just start with that. We're going to ask for a formal response. Let's start with that, and then we're, you know, we can continue, we can try to get together. That's the other thing that we, we've been offering. So we'll go from there.
Can we take care of this? I mean, who's, who's going to draft this? Does this come from the chair? Does this come from the superintendent?
Either both of us, or one of us, probably, me or both of us, we will reach out and ask for a formal response.
I, I would like, I would like to see this, I would like to have a follow-up conversation in our next meeting, if that's possible.
Yes.
Because it's very reasonable to expect two weeks is plenty of time for us to be discussing the next phase of this.
Yep. Hopefully. So, you know, we can't guarantee how quick the response is going to come, but I can, I can promise that we're going to send our request for a formal response soon. Good. Anything else on 17?
Well, so what, well, actually, this is 18 now.
Oh, 18, sorry.
So, but what I would like to get is a vote of school committee. You know, for the most part, you're voting a bottom line, but I think it's just good practice to vote a budget. But, so basically, what we're doing is we're going from the original budget that was voted, the changes that have been made, which are mainly salary, there's been some joshing around, there's been a few things put in to covers, cover some items that I know are going to create, you know, an expense with a zero budget to them. But it's mostly salary changes. And so what that is, is the budget as it exists, which is one hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars over budget, minus the amount that we can charge the school choice, twenty thousand, one sixteen forty-two, which will get us down to the exact amount over we are for the three articles that we've requested. And we have that, that school choice money, because we just put twenty-one thousand dollars in school choice out of last year's budget, luckily. So that worked out very well. But we're one hundred and seventy-nine thousand-
Strategically, never likely.
Yeah, strategically, yes. So the balanced budget would be the budget as it exists today, minus the amount of those articles, because we're not going to put them in the budget, because they have not been approved yet, and we really need to be entering a balanced budget, with the understanding that if we are awarded the money for those three articles, they will fund those lines, and the budget will be balanced. If we don't get that money, then there's going to be an issue that the budget's one hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars over balance, over budget.
So are you, in essence, saying that the budget that was voted at the town meeting plus one seventy-nine and change, is what we need to approve as our new budget?
No, no, actually, I'm saying the budget at the town meeting is what you approved, moved around a bit, and it's-
Reaffirm basically, because there were some changes to payroll and all that stuff.
Right, salaries, things, right. So basically, now we'll have a budget that matches as closely to payroll and our actual expenses as, as we can get at this point in time. Put that in, which will help to when we next run budget expenditures, we will have a budget in there. And, but with the understanding of, we need the three articles to fund those lines, so that the budget will truly be- But with the understanding of, we need the three articles to fund those lines, so that the budget will truly be balanced.
So the motion should be for eight million, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand and nine hundred and seventy-six dollars?
Yep, and four cents, as identified in the last column of the budget document.
Bone and green, right?
Yeah. So is there a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. This is to approve a budget of, an updated budget of eight million, eight million, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and four cents. Thank you for the motion and second. Any discussions, any other questions? Okay, all in favor to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
School Committee goals, are we good to approve those as our official goals? I don't know that they would, because we wanted to just give everyone an opportunity to read again. The four goals. Can we just vote?
You just need a motion?
Yeah, we need a vote, right?
Are they in here somewhere?
They're not in this...
They're last meetings.
The second.
While you are reviewing, did you get the notification of the MASC charting the course?
Yeah, I took that.
You took it?
Yes.
Excellent.
I have a copy of the sheet if you want to see it.
We are a fully compliant committee.
Awesome. Why do I only have the minutes in here? Oh, no, wait.
I drove up to...
Lee, right?
Oh, you took a trek.
There was Dalton, I think, is where it was.
I went to Lee. There's, yeah. And then sure enough, after I took it, there was something in Budlow.
It's beautiful out there.
It was nice. This is many years ago, of course, but... Did you find them?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just looking at them, you know, and this is all gonna happen in this year?
No, these will derive some of the conversations at the strategic planning process. And these are not, these are not goals just for this year.
Look, I was confused, because it says two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, School Committee Goals.
Actually, that's how we call them, but that doesn't mean that these were to be completed by the end of the school year, right?
Because if you look at them, it's a little overwhelming to think that it's gonna get done in one year. So I just wanted to clarify that.
So I can tell you that number one should be done by the end of the school year, the policy review. Number two should be done by the end of the school year. The budget process will be done. We're gonna approve that document and all that, so it's gonna be done. The fourth one is the one that is now part of the strategic planning process. This is ours, but it's probably gonna be part of that overall communication. I'm assuming it's gonna be done within this year as well.
Just think of the mmm that you're gonna leave on.
I'm telling you, aye.
We're gonna get there.
At the end of the school year.
We're gonna get it there, just for you.
So our new goal, our new target date is April two thousand eighteen.
Six weeks from when I'm on to the end of the school year.
All right. You'll come back for a special vote.
So is there a motion to approve the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen School Committee Goals?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Will we be able to post these somewhere on our website? Thank you. So that everybody can see what we were talking about. Any other questions, discussion on the goals? All in favor to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Rural Schools Coalition?
So, I had my first Skype meeting with the Rural Schools Coalition. It was mad fun. Just to bring you up to date, the Coalition is still in existence. It has voted for a representative board, and their primary focus is to advocate at the legislative level for rural school initiatives, aid, increasing transportation reimbursement, sparsity aid for rural districts, understanding what the benefits of small school districts are, and the Commonwealth's responsibility toward districts particularly that are rural, mostly Western Mass, but somewhat up into the northern reaches of the Commonwealth, but also very much so on the Cape, where they are seeing dwindling enrollment out there as well. We have talked about developing regional services. They like to refer to it, although I disagree, sort of like a dating platform, where if Granby is looking for an assistant superintendent or a curriculum director, we might be able to find someone else who's looking for a curriculum director, and then we could work together and create a shared position, which would increase our capacity here to provide things like professional development and curriculum writing, which are all part of our strategic plan, but that we could share that service with other districts who are like-minded and like-needed. So we would be saving resources and spreading the cost of some of these additional things across multiple districts. So they are writing the Regional Efficiency Grant for that purpose, and we'll be presenting that as a coalition. And so we have joined with them, as we took the vote last year, to join the Coalition, so we're very excited about that work. And our next meeting is in November. So if there's anything that the Committee would like me to bring, just let me know. I did bring to the table that I wanted to be clear, because there seems to be a misunderstanding that regionalizing means that it's cost efficient and reduces our costs, when in fact, it really can contain our costs, but not reduce. We don't offer what is being offered in the eastern part of the state because of our lower enrollment, and therefore, our lack of resources, and most, the majority of our resources go to supporting students in classrooms or through guidance and social work. And so where we fall short are the Central Office expenditures around curriculum, professional development, unit design, and those kinds of things. Those fall curriculum resourcing, textbooks, instructional supplies. So I just wanted to be clear that regionalizing does not necessarily mean that our costs are decreased. It means that for the majority, it's contained, but it's mostly because we don't offer as much.
Cool.
Quick question. Well, is there gonna be an opportunity at the conference in November for the rural?
Yes, they present. Yep, they present, and I forgot. Thank you for bringing that up. There will also be an opportunity, they're looking for school committees of the rural districts to get together. So we'll be trying to do a rural school committee meeting at some point. These are open meetings, so School Committee members do attend. So I, with Skype now, I will be asking for permission to send out the links to you folks, so that if you have the time and you wanna participate as a School Committee member, you can. They're very interesting.
I love that.
Work, so...
Thank you.
Maybe when you, you know, get back from, or when you're on your trip?
My trip?
Oh, that's right, you didn't go. Sorry. The next one. Reschedule.
This is one of those initiatives that we're gonna pursue. This has been in play for a little while. It's going a little too slowly.
It's going much more slowly than you would hope, to have any relief be impactful in a timely manner for what we are facing. But there is momentum around the fact that the Commonwealth cannot ignore the economic pressures in the western part of the state.
Yeah.
It's just taking them longer to identify that, as well as the Chapter Seventy funding formula and finding the revenue sources for that, so...
We're gonna have to start looking at, sooner than later, we've been talking about this, look at this whole thing differently. Because now what we're hearing is from some more school districts on the eastern side that they have too many students. It's because all the businesses are there, and Massachusetts, I think, is on top of the list attracting people for business reasons. So the funding is gonna be even more skewed. There are some other initiatives going on, like asking the state for charter school reimbursement out of state budget as opposed to taking it out of school school budgets, basically, or, you know, taking it out of what we could have received or would have received. But there are some other things going on. I don't know how quickly these things are gonna work this way. I'm getting very impatient when I hear that, oh, we're gonna, great conversation, we're gonna get together again next time. Not you, just the other folks.
No, I know. I feel it. I actually asked, if I'm on Skype, can you see me? And they all laughed and said, no, we couldn't see you, because it's very frustrating. You know, when we're trying to design instruction for students in the moment, and make significant changes and improvements to what we offer, you know, to hear that this is two years away, or three years away, or four years away, doesn't help what we're facing and have been facing now for probably eight years. You know, this is not a problem that started last year, didn't start the year before. You know, it started in two thousand eleven, you know, with a perception that choice is better. And I will stand up and say it a thousand times, choice is not better in Granby. Granby Public Schools are the best choice for Granby families, period.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's true.
So we're gonna get that word of mouth?
That word of mouth.
Yeah.
Yep, sorry.
It's gonna be our new slogan. So, moving on to our standing reports, starting with our Superintendent's report.
Okay, so I have to go back to the right folder here. We had a great week, couple of weeks. I'm very excited about the work that's been happening in Granby. Okay. So, as I mentioned, we had a strategic planning task force reconvene and are working hard reviewing the current plan as it will expire in two thousand and eighteen and developing the next plan. We had an excellent visit from a former student and his Yale Society of Orpheus and Bacchus Choral Ensemble. They put on a wonderful show for our students. We had over two hundred, I think, twenty students and staff members attend. And they did just a phenomenal job. They were entertaining and energetic, and I hope students... When I looked at the East Meadow students that attended, they didn't take their eyes off of the performers. And it was a forty-five minute performance, so it was wonderful to have them here. At East Meadow, we had an outstanding fitness day, and we had many parents, grandparents, family members, community members, siblings, teachers, supporting our students on their fun run-walk to understand fitness and to make fitness a priority in their lives. It was a beautiful day. I think last year, it rained. I think it rained.
I think it rained.
Yeah, so this year was gray and threatening, but it was dry and really perfect weather. I wanted to point out that we have begun our learning walks as administrative team, and so we're going into schools and classrooms. And so some of the wonderful things we're seeing are students being paired to do pair thinking and pair problem solving on the fly, so that if a teacher is asking a question and not getting a lot of response from students, they will say, oh, why don't you turn and talk about that, or here's three minutes for you, go ahead and think that through with your partner. And what that does is really allow all students time to think about the process, talk about their thinking with a peer, and then have an answer ready so that more students are engaged in the lesson. We're seeing a lot of that in classrooms. We're seeing many activities such as bookmaking with students around mathematical concepts and vocabulary, so we're thrilled to see those kinds of activities in classrooms for kids. And in general, it's just shaping up to be an amazing year for our students and staff, so, excited.
Thank you.
Question, this Yale Society, was that a former Granby student that went to Yale?
It was.
It was.
Emory's son.
It's my son.
Well, I'm just... I'm sorry about that, but... Last year at the graduation, when the students were speaking, I think there was, there was one that was taking classes at Mount Hoyle.
Yes.
There was one that was already enrolled at Amherst College, I think. And then you have Yale here, and I remember the September before, I ran for the School Committee. I was out there, you were having a School Committee meeting here, that was open to the public and you wanted some input, and unfortunately, there was a sign on the door that said, "Executive Session." I stood out there with some woman who was really frustrated, and she made the statement that no Granby graduates can make it into good quality colleges, and I'm thinking, that can't be true.
We have them in Harvard, too.
So, obviously, there's that disconnect.
Yeah, Brown, Smith.
Maybe that needs to be spoken about more, but...
Yeah, that's absolutely true. And we're not, I mean, that's why I'm saying, we're not really doing a great job in telling everyone that our students are capable and they are getting what they need. Maybe not all of them, but they are getting what they need to make it...
And it's not only the Ivy League schools, you know, we had a, we have a lot of students at UMass and the Honors College. And Honors College in, you know, because that's kind of an up-and-coming trend in colleges, and we see a lot of our students going into those honors programs.
Yeah. This year alone, we had American University, we had Boston University, we had Boston College, Bard, multiple UMass honors programs. We had Amherst last year, we had West Point a year before them. You know, you can just name the school, we had students go into any which one of them, but we're doing a, you're absolutely correct. We're doing a bad job showing what we're capable of doing.
And the percentage, based on the number of students, has to be pretty high. You compare that to some other communities around here, I'm thinking, it's probably really good.
No, great point. Not to dampen the mood, but maybe next time, can we just have a conversation about the enrollment numbers?
Yes, so, I meant to say that in my report. Kathy is on vacation, and so I didn't have a chance to finalize the report with her before she left, so it will be on the November sixth, I believe, is our next meeting, so, yes. And also, that's tagged with David finishing the October report for DESI. So, all of those numbers, so we have our own reports, and then we have the DESI report, so we'll be presenting enrollment and School Choice, and, because we've had some additions of School Choice in the past weeks, couple of weeks, we've had new students coming, particularly to Granby Junior/Senior High School, so we're excited about that.
Great. So next we have, did you have anything to be collected?
No, I've not received anything new, and our next meeting is the fifteenth of November.
I think that Bill Deal had asked me to reach out and see if this School Committee would like him to come and present again. He presented last year for the Community, the Collaborative for Educational Services, and just talked about the work that was going on with the Collaborative, because we do, we are a partner with them, so...
Yeah. Is there anything specific that he can focus on?
Yep.
Yeah, if you, to be honest with you, you could probably do a much better job explaining the work that they've been doing with their two their two programs, that they've been really taking a deep dive, look at over the last few months.
Yeah. Yeah, there's some new developments there, for sure. There's Mount Tom Academy, which is supporting students at risk for dropping out with the Collaborative with HCC. There are some where they're located, there are some physical plant issues that they're addressing. In addition, there's an arm... Um, in addition, uh, there's an arm that, uh, is looking at social justice, as you've read in the paper, with, uh, East Hampton, um, having an issue, and the Attorney General having to come out, plus Palmer having an issue, so, um, working with communities around social justice, um, and then all of their special education programming, so...
Yeah. And, and that's great, I just, I was, you know that I was on that board, uh, uh, before my...
Not to forget homework help, and, and not homework help, but, um, the after-school program, SOAR, uh, for us here in Granby.
See, each time, it's great to hear what the collaborative is doing, but what I'm curious to find out about is there is anything specific that we can focus on, that, you know, change in a way that may benefit us even more? Otherwise, we are collaborating, we're, you know, we're a member, uh, district. So, if, you know, if you can think of anything, you, uh, can think of anything, that would be great. But it would be good to see Bill, yeah. Um, the building committee, we met last week.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, everything's going according to plan, and the, uh, project manager made a point of knocking on wood many times. I guess he, now, he's getting concerned that he's saying the same thing over and over. Um, we actually, the, the... Normal financial speak is that we're on budget, but we're actually under budget. So now they are going back to MSBA to tell them that, here are the bids, here is what we had budgeted and voted for, so how do we handle that amount? Who, where, where is it supposed to be going, because the rule wasn't really that clear? Uh, no, actually, this is, this, you know, more than likely, they're gonna try to split it between, um, uh, reimbursable, non-reimbursable, then if it's reimbursable, what percentage of it, you know, goes back to state, what percentage stays here? Because that's gonna determine the last 10% of the borrowing that we need to do. Um, what, what that amount is gonna be, hopefully, it's gonna be lower than we expected.
So what are the options for an, a non, uh, reimbursable amount?
What are the options?
Yes, so in other words, if it's non-reimbursable, does that mean you do whatever you want with those funds? You can't give them back, and you're gonna have to incorporate that into your, into your own?
So that's a good question, I'm not 100% clear on that, but if was non-reb- if, if whatever, uh, saving is about a non-reimbursable portion of it, we were paying for it as a town anyway, so it should ideally, logically, come back to us. Even when it's reimbursable, because the idea was, at the end of the day, when you look at the reimbursable portion of it, 60-some percentage was gonna come from...
63 points.
63 was gonna come from the state, 30-plus was gonna come from us.
Mm-hmm.
It should still reflect that. That's my understanding, but I may be completely off, and there, there was really no, um, common understanding or conclusion to that question. That's why, uh, project managers talking to MSBA so that they can officially tell us what the process is. Uh, other than that, everything, uh, over there is going well. They are well-planned to, uh, move in February into the new building, from East Meadow side to the new building side, um, so that...
During the vacation, the February vacation?
Yes, during February vacation, so that they can now go into, um, East Meadow School and do all the renovations that are planned.
Is that, was it... Now, is that on target, or is that...
It is on target.
Okay.
Yep, it's all on target.
That's where it's gonna get interesting, once they get into East Meadow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, uh, I don't know who it was, I was talking to somebody who said that from their, their side, uh, in East Meadow, they can see the building come together, and it looks so nice and shiny, that, you know, just, they're gonna be there for a short while, but they're looking forward to it, and all that stuff, so everybody's getting excited. Um, that's all we have, I, you know, that's, that's all great news, hopefully stays that way, um...
It looks fantastic from the outside.
Yeah.
It's so exciting, driving by it every day.
I know, it is great.
And they're moving so fast, that like, every day I go by, I'm like, oh, that's new, oh, that's...
Yeah.
The colors, uh, I mean, it's just really...
Yes.
It's really nice.
Um, the, the only thing that, that was over the budget that we discussed was related to the, um, furniture and technology. Um, MSBA only gives you money, uh, based on a very simple linear calculation, which is per student, we're gonna give you this much. And when they went out to bid, uh, the bid came back, the, the one that they, uh, accepted, came back $30,000 overs. But because we're already under budget, uh, there was a good conversation about what we're gonna do, whether or not we're gonna see, uh, any more of that, and then the committee approved unanimously to, to increase that portion of the budget by $30,000, but that is on track as well, uh, with, with everything. And, uh, the nice thing is that they looked at our, at our existing inventory of furniture, and they are saving a portion of the furniture that is in good shape and that's gonna go with whatever they are doing over there. So it's not, they did not just waste everything, they saved.
I believe it's three classroom sets of furniture, uh, which are in excellent condition and, um, very useful, so...
Yep.
Now, is the, is there money already appropriated, or do we have to talk about money to do moving from West Street Schools? I'm pretty sure there's gonna be some stuff and some sort of a schedule that you're gonna wanna create and plan, right? Do we have to start talking about that soon, or is that something that you're gonna handle, and we just approve a budget? I don't, I don't know the process.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure there's moving costs within the budget.
Yes.
Um, and I, I've actually done this in a district. Um, there's, uh, a lot of hands-on prior, um, with packing and, um, labeling, and then identifying where teachers want, you know, on the board in the new classroom, where they want their, uh, materials and supplies and desks and things. Um, it happens, you know, pretty smoothly, believe it or not. Um, it's usually within, you know, three or four days that, you know, the move happens. Um, and so we anticipate that, um, teachers will, over, uh, February break, that we'll be helping teachers get into their new classrooms, um, but the big move you write is gonna require some extra, um, from West Street into the new building is gonna require some extra.
There was some, teachers are gonna have to work a little bit further into the summer than they anticipated to help make sure the cla- or come back early to make sure their classrooms set up properly.
Yeah, it all depends on how the, uh, building goes. Um, so if we're able to get in early, teachers will want to get in early.
Currently, the, the whole thing is based on our conversation that we would like to remain on the current calendar.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what they're shooting for, so that there should not be any, any shift on, on those dates. But, you know, if anything happens, it moves a couple of days here and there, they're, they're gonna let us know in advance so that we can, uh, we can do something about it.
Okay.
Uh, two very quick points. One is about the project manager. I, um, I have to tell you that, you know, project management is a, is a difficult thing, but sometimes it can be, uh, very frustrating, too, because you don't really get the answers that you need to get. So far, and I will knock on wood, uh, for, uh, uh, our project manager, he seems to, or they collectively seem to know what's going on, they have answers for everything that we ask.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the other kudos, uh, uh, is for John Sullivan. Uh, he is on top of it, he just goes and looks at what's going on, and, uh, he wasn't in it lately, apparently, so he wanted to schedule some time inside so he could see, and he asked all the right questions, you know, always prepared with the right list of questions to make sure that everything is going according to plan from his facilities manager perspective. So everybody's doing really a great job with this project.
And if I could add, Principal Latoy, um, he's doing the management of the teacher concerns, um, the parent concerns, and trying to make sure that, um, what has been planned for is executed. So in addition to all of the work of, you know, managing two buildings and all of the day-to-day, there's this additional wealth of work that goes on around ensuring that, you know, the basketball hoops are appropriate and they're being hung, and if there's a concern that we add, you know, movable, um, hoops for our little ones, that we have those in place, and so he's doing a tremendous job fielding those instructional and community concerns. So, uh, it's a great team that's come together, and I certainly know enough to stay out of the way as much as I can, unless something comes to my level. Um, a lot of stuff is really, um, panning out very nicely, so kudos to the town, uh, for the decision.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Policy Subcommittee?
Yeah, we did not, we were not able to meet last week, so we need to...
We're meeting tomorrow, right?
Yeah, well, I was gonna ask, 'cause I have tentative on my calendar.
Confirmed.
Confirmed. Okay.
Yeah, it is posted for tomorrow, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
This is really neat.
All right, do before I get anything. All right, good. So that concludes the, um, open, uh, section of our meeting. We're gonna vote to enter into an executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, Part A3, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining, as doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Can we have a roll call?
Deanne Payne Murkowski, aye.
Jennifer Kern, aye.
Maria McClure, aye.
Emory Everon, aye.
Yeah, Mike Simpson, aye.
Thank you. Have a good evening.